Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And that brings us to recognition of students, staff and public. Is there anyone here that would like to adjust the school board on an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, come forward, we will move on to Part A. Part A includes our board business, field trip approvals, grant acceptance and contracts and agreements. I get someone to move approval of Part A agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion about our Part A agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Part A passes. That brings us to Part B, moving right along. Item number one, reserve teacher wage increase. And we will welcome our Executive Director of Human Resources, Mary Burrows. Yes?
Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorized the full day beginning wage rate for reserved teachers to be $132 per day for the, is that correct? $132 per day for the first 40 days and to be $137 per day after 40 accumulated workdays and $142 per day for Bloomington School retirees effective September 5th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, what can you tell us about this one?
Okay, Chair Leva, Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the school board, we do look at our reserve teacher rates annually and decide if we want to bring an increase forward and as you know, we've done that in the past. So we are recommending a $6 increase to the rate to remain competitive. We still want to attract, you know, high quality reserve teachers to our district and we also want to invest in our own teachers by allowing them time off for the various things that they need time off for and have PD, so this is why we're doing that.
Are there any questions?
Yes, when you say remain competitive and we're looking at our touching districts, where are we before we raise this and where will we be after we raise this?
I guess I'll have to answer that later. I have to look at the exact districts and wonder what they're at.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I've always been curious about this too. Does this, does this for reserve or substitutes and that whole picture?
Yep, so what this is for substitute teachers, if they work more than 40 days in the district, then they get a incentive, you know, they have an incentive to work with us, which is why there's a pay increase after 40 days. And then our retirees that come back and work for us and some get paid bump up from that, yep. This is not long call teachers, so this is the daily.
The long call reserves are special individual contracts.
Our under contract in the teacher contract, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, passes, thank you. That brings us to facility use permit release.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the revised facility use permit release agreement.
Second.
Welcome Tamara Seave, Executive Director of Community Education.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Leva, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board and viewing audience. You have in front of you, you have resolution to approve an updated facility use permit agreement. The updates include language that the renter needs to abide by the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement and talks about the default and cleaning that up a little bit of how we deal with the default of not agreeing to those or not following through with those terms and also modifications to the deposit and cancellation refund terms. So it's just an update and cleaning up some of the language. At this time, administration recommends approval. Are there any questions for me?
Okay. Director Swam.
Yes, just into that insurance aspect of it, everybody who rents has to have liability insurance themselves.
Correct, and that is spelled out, the correction in the insurance is just the name, how the name needs to appear on their insurance, so everything is the same except how the name needs to be spelled out in their insurance.
Are there any other questions? Sure.
Is there anything to do with parking, because I know that's a problem sometimes when people rent? Is there any, I mean, do they get any direction as to?
Well, some of that is working with each group individually depending on how large of the rental is. For example, some of our larger tournaments, so yes, Doug Langfels, I think does an incredible job of working with the individuals who are organizing the event and sometimes requiring them to have people on site or parking in a different parking lot and bussing in, so depending on how large that event is, yes. We have, you know, our facilities are used a lot and in the spring it does get busy with the school events and the rental events, so we're always looking at ways to approve that, but yes, we're really working on that parking communication and setting expectations.
Okay, thanks.
You know, it's funny talking about the parking thing, when the people came up before, it reminded me, the last time my daughter had a dance recital over at Jefferson and one of the people who was with us was complaining that there was nowhere to park and I commented, I said, "Well, eight of us came to see her recital and we drove five cars, so maybe if we only drove two cars."
That can be a part of the issue.
Some of the congestion, but.
But at the same time, it's very positive that we have the community coming into our buildings and seeing our staff and the amazing job we have keeping our schools up and opening it to the community, so there's the flip side of that as well. Thanks.
So my question was, so with the insurance, does it still, what about like individuals? If someone just wants to rent a gym for a half hour or for an hour or for two hours for their kids to run around in?
We have open gym times that might accommodate families coming into the activity center and being charged a small fee or just free, but no, if they are renting, there are certain requirements that they need to meet for insurance.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions?
Just a real quick one that popped into my mind. I know that we use our schools consistently, we like to keep them full with activities. Is there a, is there a calendar? So if I, if I, like Chair Leva said, if I just want to have my kids, 20 of their best good buddies go run around in the gym, is there a calendar where I can look and see what I'm up against that particular?
Yes, through building reservations, they have calendars online and then working with Niljon in the front office, so if you'd like to see that information or how you get to it, I can make sure that we communicate that with you.
Okay, that's great, it's just, I want to, just try and understand if, if I'm bringing 20 of my best, my kids' best buddies and I see there's a basketball tournament, there's a, there's a, maybe there's volleyball or there's a play or there's, you know, you want to use the building as best you can, maybe I want to get there early if I want a good parking spot.
Anybody else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to number three, lease agreement for cell tower at the stadium.
Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a lease agreement for a cell tower at the stadium and authorizes administration to enter into a contract with Verizon Wireless.
Second.
Okay, and that'll bring us to Rod Y. Zifficovich, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services. Sorry, Tom gives me a hard time if I don't get the titles correct, so I thought I better, I'll just read them this time, make sure I get every, every one in there.
Chair Leva, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is a lease that has been at the stadium for quite a while. What is happening right now is Verizon is doing some expansion, doing some work on the tower, they needed to renew the lease at this point in time to be able to do that work.
Are there any questions?
How many cell towers do we have total in the district that we're leasing?
I'd have to get you the exact number, I'm thinking, I think, I believe it's five, but I'll get you the exact number.
Okay, well, I mean, just ballpark is fine and they're all probably pretty much the same agreement?
It's different based on the size of the tower, how many dishes or items are out there. Well, it'll be coming to the board in probably either at the next board meeting or the following. Is another for Verizon's and they're going to a smaller kind of dish on smaller locations, not as high up, it's kind of their new process and we're kind of piloting some of it for them, so.
Are there, besides cell towers, is there any demand for, as leasing out space for like, I don't know, windmills or solar panels, stuff like that, are the people coming to us for those type of things?
They have for solar, some of the things that, I mean, as you know, we have an agreement for solar, but I think some of the top of our buildings and the rest, there is some concern about the weight and those type of issues of being on top of the roofs and if there's a problem, who's responsible for?
Okay, yeah, I was just curious if there's other people that are trying to find space to lease and if that's like a big thing going on or?
I think there's always the asking and we evaluate it every time someone comes through.
If it doesn't interfere with, you know, any operations or anything?
Right.
Okay, excellent, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? So if I'm reading this correctly, it's potentially a 25-year agreement? Correct. Okay. All those in favor, please signify.
I was just going to point out, I know Rod and his team have done a lot of work on this thing, but the cell phone companies have leverage and so when you say a potential of 25 years, you're right, but Verizon can cancel after five years.
Right.
We're on the hook though for 25 years if.
If, so it's their prerogative if they want to keep it?
Right.
We can't cancel it?
We can't cancel it.
Okay.
But we have with both this Verizon, I believe it's with this one too and then the one we have over at Transportation, that if they need to or plan on removing it and leaving, they have to restore whatever they've done back to its original.
Okay, and it's a 2% increase every year, correct? So it's not like we're locked in at this same rate for 25 years, we're going to get inflationary costs increased, which is good though?
Almost inflationary.
Almost, yeah, depends on the year, I guess.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is to number four here, resolution relating to revoking existing operating referendum revenue of the district approving new authorization and calling an election thereon. Who wants to?
Sure. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 adopts the attached resolution relating to revoking the existing operating referendum revenue authorization of the district approving new authorization and calling an election thereon. It is hereby determined that it is necessary and expedient for the district to revoke its existing referendum revenue authorization of $1,502.15 per adjusted pupil unit and to replace that authorization with a new authorization of $1,995 per adjusted pupil unit.
Second.
Pupil unit, excuse me.
Second.
Purple.
If you remember back in, on March 27th, we came to the board with a resolution to look into an election for the operating referendum. What this is doing is taking that and formalizing the election, formalizing the ballot question and putting in process the actual election for November 7th.
Are there any questions?
Sure, there's 23 pages, so there's got to be a question in there somewhere. When did we start to identify the tax increase on a per student basis as opposed to a dollar amount per resident or per household or whatever it was?
I couldn't give you the exact time, I think it was back in the early 90s where they went from the mill rate, away from the mill rate into a per pupil.
Per pupil one, which gives kind of a distorted picture because of how that rate affects the resident or the citizen household is not the same percentage and so forth. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, and what, what this will do is basically what we've talked about is that we're looking at somewhere around for a median sized home about $8 a month.
So this resolution, it will replace our current referendum with the one that we're hoping that passes in November, so what happens if the one in November doesn't pass? Do we have to come back and do anything or will we be fine and the current referendum will stay there?
No, because the voter would, if they don't pass it, that means they didn't accept revoking it.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure that's clear. Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, the existing referendum would end next year, not this year?
Correct, it would, it would end in the 18, 19 school year.
Okay, some people have asked me in the, in the general public, they look at it and they say, "Well, that was '07, how come it, and you say it's 10 years, why is it ending in 18 and we did take a deferment for the first year and we didn't take the?"
Correct, we, on the 2007 election, we had both the first capital projects levy for technology and we had the operating referendum. We decided to move the operating referendum even though we had the election that year to defer it one year for the, to go, just to kind of spread the difference between the two.
Sure, just for the folks that are watching, the math does make sense.
Also, one other thing to add with this is that we did, within the referendum question, there will be an inflationary increase within the referendum.
So yeah, so we've been talking about this for probably, I think, three years, about when we should do this, if we should do this, how much, and so, you know, this is where we're at, so I think with that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Yep, and that brings us, oh, we're moving right along. Summary statement of superintendent evaluation, turn it over to Director Swam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The School Board of Independent School District 271 has completed its annual superintendent evaluation for the 2016, 2017 school year. Typically, this is done in June and approved in July, but since we didn't have a board meeting in July, we're bringing it to the board tonight. This evaluation covered six performance standards and 25 leadership traits. Now, the superintendent has met or exceeded expectations in all areas reviewed, especially in the areas of strategic planning, sound financial management, establishing and maintaining good relationships with agencies and organizations outside of the district and vision card and other matrix measurements to determine all of our program performances. Now, the school board looks forward to the implementation of plans and programs to close the opportunity gap and to the engagement of the whole community to further the mission of the school district. That concludes this superintendent evaluation summary. Secondly, I would like to move that whereas the superintendent has done a very good job this past year and whereas he has not received a raise for the past five years, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a modification to the 2015, 2018 superintendent contract with Les Fujitaki by amending section eight of that contract to read as follows. Salary, the superintendent will be paid an annual salary of $181,800 for the 2017, 2018 school year, the last year of his existing contract commencing on July 1st, 2017. This annual salary will be continued for the remaining term of the contract and the salary will be paid in 24 equal installments during the contract year. And the school board authorizes and directs the Chair and Clerk of the Board of Education to sign the amendment to the contract as attached.
Second.
So discussion, questions?
Director Swam, the number that you referenced, that represents a 1% raise?
I'm sorry, thank you, that represents a 1% increase for the final year of his contract.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Thank you for that report and I, that brings us to school board self-evaluation. So I have a brief statement to read. The school board completed a self-evaluation for the 2016, 17 school year. Board members had the opportunity to evaluate their work in areas of board governance and policy, operational oversight, board governance, superintendent relations and community engagement. Board members also had the opportunity to share comments on their work, what they felt they did well and to offer suggestions on how they can improve. Going forward, the board will work on items brought up in the comments shared in the self-evaluation process. And I have to do a report on closed sessions that we had. The school board, superintendent, members of cabinet and the district's legal council met in closed session on June 26th, or, yeah, June 26th and August 4th for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining for all units. No school board action was taken or required. And that will bring us to board member reports, who'd like to start this off? Mr. Chair. Director Bergstrom?
All right, let's see, today's August 14th, so that means that it's time for me to start talking about school bus awareness, stop arm awareness. We're all enjoying some, some summer relaxation, we go on vacations, we do whatever we do in the summer that doesn't include getting our kids on the school buses. I'd just like to offer a friendly reminder that when school starts, and it'll start sooner than you think, there's a lot of our younger students and some of the older ones that take the bus that may not have taken the bus before, they don't know the protocol. They're excited going to school, they hop on the bus at their, at their corner out in front of their house and they hop off the bus when they get onto our campuses and off they go. And until we can get them trained in on the protocol of not leaving the bus until it comes to a complete stop, making sure that you're safe, I'm asking the public, everyone that drives on our public roads, everyone that drives their students to school, just to take an extra four or five minutes, just slow down, remember, remember where you are, make sure that you look, make sure that people that are leaving your vehicle, whatever it is, that you look as well. I think we can, if we just take some time to slow down, we can all get there safe. Just another quick reminder that the stop arm on the school bus should be considered a red light, it's not a stop and go, it's not a stop, look both ways and then go, you stop until the stop arm is retracted fully and the lights on the bus are no longer flashing. And even then, please take an extra second to look to make sure that one of our youngest isn't just taking a quick run in front of the bus.
Darling.
So I'll be back again at our next board meeting to give a helpful reminder and perhaps until you get sick of me saying it into September, but really, we want to make sure that everyone arrives safe and give our bus drivers the, you know, the time they need to make sure that they can unload their students at their corners and offload them successfully and safely at, at school, so appreciate you listening in to my public service announcement, that's all I have.
Would you like to go next?
Sure. Director Bergstrom? So a few weeks ago on National Night Out, Director Saghaf and I went around to, I think it was about four or five different block parties just to, to talk to residents about the, the upcoming referendum and we were just doing information, so we're handing out information cards just to see if they had heard about the referendum and what we'd found is that most of what we talked to have no idea that there's a referendum on the ballot in November, but that also that they're very supportive. We weren't trying to do any type of advocacy or anything, but just us giving the information, they're saying, "Yes, we support your school, so we'll be there to vote for it." So that's always good to hear that our community is supportive of our schools and what we're doing here. And so also last Tuesday, I went over to Jefferson for their informational referendum meeting, they, they're meeting every Tuesday at 10:30, I believe, and so I want to thank the students and, and staff and parents that showed up to a meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning in the middle of August to talk about the referendum and it was great to see the students there, some of them are on our student advisory council that are just jumping up and taking a leadership role and saying, "We'll make the banner, we'll, we'll man that table, we'll do this," so they're really taking a leadership role and active participation and informing, you know, their, their school community about the referendum. And last Wednesday, went to the vote for the advocacy group, the, what do they call it, Yes for BPS group over at, what is it, Oak Grove Presbyterian Church, and it was a, a lot of people showed up at 7 o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday, so it was good to see all, all that energy of our community, of our citizens and residents that are getting involved and, and trying to help pass this referendum. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Director Saghaf?
Just a couple of things really quickly. We all get new schools in the summer for the fall, so I've gone to visit all three of my new schools to introduce myself and primarily to find out when their referendum meetings were also, so I could start attending them. As usual, though, two of the schools have their meeting the same time, so I'm not quite sure how that's going to work out, but they're both on Friday morning this week, so hopefully there will also be a good crowd turning out for those. I also have the custodian and transportation negotiations on Wednesday morning, so I'm hoping that, that will move forward. And I had a chance to attend an event that was hosted by the Minnesota Council of Churches here recently in Bloomington called Respectful Conversations and it was very interesting. I thought maybe in this time, maybe it's a good thing they're hosting those. And so, but on that note, I just wanted to say that, you know, thank you to the people around this table, we have often disagreed, but we are always respectful and always manage to either agree to disagree or work out a compromise or something, so I just want to thank you for the, and, and I should include the people back there along the wall, cabinet, for all of us always managing to keep our conversations respectful even when we disagree, so thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Sure.
I have a couple of things. I attended the MSBA Summer Conference and I missed you all, especially during lunchtime, but it was okay. And the title of the conference was Leading Above the Line and they had a speaker who come and talked about how to focus on discovering the power of choice. So when talking about the power of choice, what do we choose? Do we go above the line where we're supposed to be and be stable or below the line? And so, and how that impacts our decisions. And so, pretty much focused towards teachers in the classroom, but also leaders, you know, in general, when we're making decisions, we need to be in a good position so that we can make the right choice. Then how do we maintain that balance and how do we pass or model this kind of balance for our students and how it is important to go, when it comes to professional development, to go beyond what is curriculum and data numbers to what is actually important for the students and to focus professional development for teachers on developing those social and emotional needs of the students. Then they provided a legislative summary and. and also an update on ESA from the Department, Minnesota Department of Education. So the ESA law that every student succeeds at, they gave us a little bit of an update about that, about that, that new law. And one of the things that, that really caught my attention was regarding MCAs and how MCAs are going to be, I mean, they're required, but they're going to be required to the point where if a parent wants to opt out from the MCAs, that, that's okay. If a student is opting out, the parent can sign that. But what is going to be new is that if the student does not take the test, then it's going to be counted as failed. So it's going to be a zero, basically. And that's going to impact the student in later on. So that's something to kind of be aware of and to kind of watch closely as it develops. They talked about transgender issues, so that's another thing to kind of pay attention to, considering some of the cases in some school districts. And then I attended the AMSD meeting just last week. And pretty much, they talked about the Cruz-Guzman case. You know, you remember the Cruz-Guzman case and how it was brought to court? Well, court decided that that was not a decision that they could make, that that was pretty much in the hands of the legislators, and that is the role of the legislators to decide how, you know, the, the kind of things that are going to be coming from the school districts, the mandates, the statutes and all that. But then the plaintiffs took these to the Supreme Court. And so, starting all over again. So that's another thing to kind of be, keep, be, keep, keep paying attention to, to see how that develops as well. Because even though this was specifically for Minneapolis and St. Paul, it also is going to, possibly going to include the rest of the school districts, the suburbs as well. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I'll go. I went to the Bloomington Advocacy Committee meeting where we discussed legislative issues and things that are, are happening and some of the things coming down the, the pipeline. Since our, our chair, Heather Starks, determined that since so many of the people on that committee also wanted to be part of the Vote Yes Committee, and that you can't advocate and be, you can't advocate in that role as a Bloomington Advocacy Committee, she decided to put that committee on hiatus until after the election, so then those members can feel free and not feel like maybe they have to walk a tightrope in, in order to determine if they were in a position where they could advocate or, or not advocate. So we won't be meeting again until November, but we're hoping to meet with the legislators right away in November or early December. I am on the principals negotiation team, and I got an email here just before 6:00 saying that the principals had approved the tentative agreement at their meeting that they had today. So that's good news. I'm anticipating then we'll get that on our next agenda to approve. And then also wanted to mention, it's in the meeting minutes, but someone, I've had people ask about this. We had a special meeting on August 4th to discuss superintendent contract and negotiations. And at that meeting, we determined to give the superintendent a 1% increase above what his final year's contract would be, which we just increased by 1% today. So it'll be a initial 1% that will start in next July, but that means we get him for another three years in 10 months. Are you going to renew again after that, or you're, you're going to decide your lips are sealed? Okay. Man a few words today? All right, so I just want to thank the board members for, for approving that. And that, I believe, concludes my report. Superintendent?
Thank you. I have a few things to report. First, after three and a half years of relentless pursuit, the state has granted Dr. Dave Heistat access to the statewide longitudinal educational data system, microdata. So he has access to, to that set of information now. So that means that he can continue to track our students longitudinally for continuous improvement and strategic planning purposes. Second thing is, Tamara Seave and earlier child team successfully applied for and received additional voluntary pre-K funding over and above what we received last year. So that means we'll be able to service more children than we had anticipated. So that's really good news. The next thing is that start of school information. The first day of school for students in grades one through 12 is Tuesday, September 5th. We're going to have a back-to-school celebration for our staff on August 28th. And that's the same day as the teacher workshop week, the start of the teacher workshop week. And back-to-school nights are scheduled for that week as well. August 31st is when most schools are hosting this event. Parents and guardians should check with their respective schools on those specific dates and times. And tomorrow night, there's going to be a One Bloomington Summit. As all of you recall, the City of Bloomington has identified One Bloomington as their theme for their strategic planning. An action group is being formed, and the first meeting of that group is tomorrow night. And it's going to be a kickoff meeting, and it's going to be, I believe, at City Hall. Okay? And I'll be participating.
I'll be part of the inclusion equity group as well.
Okay, great. That concludes my report.
Okay. Is there any other items to come before the board this evening? All right, I'll call a meeting adjourned. Thank you.